Formerly one that Commissioner Preier is participating by phone today.
Let's bow our heads. Heavenly Father, please be with us as we meet today. Please be with our young men and women, particularly in foreign lands, as they go about doing their duty to protect us. Please be with all of those that have lost loved ones over the last few weeks. In thy holy name we pray, amen.
Anyone want to rise and face the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have the agenda before you? Do you have any adjustment? I would like to add a resolution to declare Person County a constitutional rights protected county. I'll make that a form of motion. Pro discussion?
Did you want to add that as the last item or put it?
Last item. We'll make it number five. Discussion from the board, hearing none, all in favor say aye. All opposed. All right, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Then properly moved, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. All opposed. Formal comments, you have the list, Madam York?
Will it grab back?
We have three people signed up and also have a letter that was given to the board that I will read last. First, we have Anthony Horton.
First of all, I'd like to thank y'all for this opportunity to speak today. And I will be in reference to the, y'all call it solar farm discussion, I don't like to call them farms, because where I come from, farming's hard work. So, I like to call them solar facilities or solar plants, whatever. But anyway, I'm glad that y'all are bringing up this discussion. Of course, there's been a lot of concern in the county about a proposed 800 acre mega site in Hurdle Mills, which has brought a lot of concern to a lot of folks. That proposal has been amended and they have rescinded the extension of that proposal. It is now, to my knowledge, they're still pushing a 330-plus acre solar farm that was approved by the utility commission back in 2017, the best I can remember. So, far as we know, that is still on the table. Now, I've been informed that that has not, the rezoning or the special use permits has not become before the commissioners or the board as of yet. But, we just still want to express our concern as a resident that will be directly impacted from this, if this happens. And then, I do have an additional 450 names from a petition who are also concerned about that. And I think it's only at that point because it's not made as public knowledge as it should. So, I'm just here as far as a concern of that particular, in any solar facilities of how they need to be. You know, I don't know all the county regulations. I know with the county plan states, as far as, you know, the special use permits and everything, you know, it needs to fall in harmony with the plan. You know, they don't, they're not supposed to damage property values and stuff like that. And it's in the comprehensive plan, you know, issuing a special use permit, y'all can, I'm sure y'all already know that. But, it's just basically, you know, something like this, a mega facility here in this county of 300-plus acres, 80 megawatt facility, if that facility were to go through, it would be tied for the largest one in the state of North Carolina. And these things do not need to be placed in rural residential areas, right up against people's property houses. And I know y'all have regulations in there to state, and they have to be so many feet from people's property, so many feet from people's homes and what have you. But, the biggest concern with something like that is that we have a lot of runoff from this, from this proposed site. And we do have pictures of that, you know, and we just, you know, there's a lot of concerns of, you know, these things are supposed to be safe in their current state, but what happens in a natural disaster? You know, what happens when a tornado picks these things up and distributes them all across other people's property and sterilizes their property? Hellstorms causing damage to these things, and then the chemicals inside leaching into the ground. I think those are considerations that a lot of people have not taken into consideration. So, you know, that's my concern about something with a facility that large, being placed in a rural residential area, you know, who's going to be responsible if we do have that natural disaster? Is it the landowner? Is it the, is it the solar company? Does it fall on the county if the county approves that? So, I think that's something that you need to consider if this proposal does come to you for a rezoning or special use permit, however that falls. I just want, you know, for you to be concerned about that. If it does come to that point, hopefully it will not. Hopefully, it never comes to y'all. Y'all don't have to make that decision, because I know it would be a tough decision on y'all, and y'all weigh every aspect of, you know, what will happen with that. But, that facility being that close to residential area, in one of the, one of the people's homes that live there, he will be completely surrounded if this thing goes through. He will have solar panels on all four sides of his house. So, that's just something you needed today to take into consideration too, if it gets to that point. We just want to make you aware of what could possibly happen, and that you will, you know, give this prayerful consideration if it does. So, thank you for allowing me to speak today. And if y'all have any questions, anytime, just, you know, feel free to ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Horton.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's very nice to hear that you have a Second Amendment resolution in mind. I have read it. I would like to share with you Person County GOP's recommendations. They're not too unsimilar from yours at all. I've shared yours with other people, and they give it a nod also. We'll just skip Kyle. About the only thing that I would like to see, if we can work together on this, is basically the last, our last few paragraphs here, stating what the county will not do in the event the state should lose its mind and come after our rights and liberties. And, I would also probably like to see more language about red flag laws, specifically in conjunction with the Fifth and Fourteenth Amendment. I don't have your copy, Ray, but you did address that, but you did not call out, call the red flag laws out by name. I think I would like to see that added to this one and/or yours. It's very disconcerting for a lot of people in the state who have seen what has happened up in Virginia. And it's nice to see the legislature up there be rebuffed a little bit. And we would like to go ahead and join other counties in the state and send in a signal to our legislature that we are going to protect our constitutional liberties and rights as much as we possibly can. I'm not going to read all of this. It's right there for you to read, and we've also shared it via social media. I would like to also, if I may, say one thing about solar farms. I don't believe it's a good idea in any way, shape, or form. Solar is the most expensive electricity there is. That's passed off onto the consumer, and it hits the people who can afford it the least. I understand these people's concerns about being wrapped up around a bunch of glass and plastic. That's just, that's something I'd hate to see happen to those people out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you very much for your service to this county and for the opportunity to speak before you this morning. I would like to reiterate Mr. Weaver's statements that we are very pleased that you came forth with a really good resolution on the Second Amendment. It was a great start. We wanted to add some things. We presented it to a lot of people, probably 40, 50 people weighed in, you know, did dress, you know, back and forth language, trying not to muddy it up too much, but really to put some teeth in it, that we stand, you know, our constitution is the law of the land, and our rights to bear arms shouldn't ever be infringed. It wasn't a suggestion. It was there for a purpose. So, I just wanted to reiterate that. I also wanted to speak on the solar farm. I live in Hurdle Mills, and I just think that it's just a blight on the environment from an aesthetic standpoint. And there's very few environmental journalists that are willing really to report on the negative things of the solar industry, but they often, these panels that contain lead, cadmium, and other toxic chemicals, they can't be removed without breaking apart the entire panels. So, you've got this toxic stuff that can run and leach into the land. And we know from different disasters, most recently in Puerto Rico, where their solar farms were devastated by the hurricane. And so, now you've got all this toxic waste that's gone into the land, and you've lost the capabilities of creating any power from the solar panels. There's just a lot of, you know, problems with the disposal of these, and companies that install them not being financially stable to be able to recycle and going out of business. And that puts additional cost onto counties or municipalities. So, I think the waste from the solar panels will be much worse than any kind of coal ash you could possibly imagine going into a landfill. So, that is something that I think really needs to be considered. The International Renewable Energy Agency basically says today recycling costs are, you know, outweigh the value. I mean, it's too expensive to recycle them, so they just put them in landfills. So, there's no mechanisms, or there's not strong enough mechanisms to mandate how these panels are taken down, recycled properly, without being a health hazard to communities and to landfills. And so, that's just so much up in the air. There's not a lot of legislation in place at the state, federal, county levels, and so please take that into consideration when you're weighing in on the solar capacity of this farm. It's probably not a good location in a residential area, and it would absolutely be a blight on a beautiful community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gentry. We also had a letter handed to the board from Ms. Brenda Clayton. It reads, "I urge you to enact regulations to govern new solar farms in Person County that protect the health and well-being of nearby residents. The value of homes that would be adjacent or nearby, the environment, wildlife, watersheds, surrounding wells, and other water sources nearby. Nearby farmlands and livestock that consider the impact on homeowners and residents who live nearby. Do not allow a few absentee landowners to spoil the environment for many people who live nearby. Do not allow a few absentee landowners to cause emotional pain to those who live nearby. Do not allow solar farms to be built in residential communities or farming slash residential communities that have become increasingly residential in the past few years. Do not allow Person County to become known as the county in North Carolina with the largest number of solar facilities in the state." Notes, "North Carolina is second only to California in number of solar farms in the U.S. The solar farm currently planned for Hurdle Mills would be one of the largest in North Carolina and the southeast U.S. The solar farm enlargement proposed but withdrawn for Hurdle Mills would have been one of the largest in the U.S. The lawyers for the solar farmers refute everyone's concerns, saying there are no studies documenting any detrimental effects from solar farms and no loss of home values. However, there are no studies showing that solar farms have positive effects on residents and the environment, or that home values stay the same or increase either. The people who will make money here are absentee landowners and the solar companies. Any jobs created during construction would be temporary. Person County needs permanent jobs, not to have county covered, not to have the county covered in solar panels. Solar panels are made in China, therefore we have no ideas how safe they are." And again, this is from Ms. Brenda Clayton, so it's been read for the record. Anybody else wish to speak to the board that didn't have an opportunity to sign up? Board members, you have the consent agenda in front of you. What's your pleasure?
For approval.
It's been properly moved for approval, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. All opposed? All right, new business. Board of Commissioners vacancy fulfillment process, Madam York.
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners. As you know, we received the resignation of Vice Chairman Newell on February 3rd, and there is a pretty detailed process laid out in state statutes that the board will need to follow in order to fill that position with an appointment, and then also place names on the ballot in November for the general election. And so, a memo had gone out to the board from Chairman Jeffers, and we wanted to spend some time this morning discussing the memo, the statutes, bless you, the process with the public, just to make sure that we all had a shared understanding of the next steps, and discuss a timetable for going through each of those steps. Also, wanted to let you know that I have Sherri Harris with us this morning, who is our Director of Elections. She, myself, and our county attorney have talked at length about this process to make sure that we are following the process as the law requires. So, once the vacancy occurs, our first statute that gets triggered, our 153A27, requires that the remaining board members, so the four other commissioners, would appoint a qualified person to fill the remainder of that term. And so, you have 60 days from the date of the resignation, from February 3rd. And if you are unable to make an appointment of a qualified individual to that seat within those 60 days, then the responsibility for fulfilling that vacancy shifts to the Clerk of Superior Court. She then will receive a notice from this board acknowledging that we're unable to fill the position, and she would have 10 days to then make an appointment to fill the vacancy. This becomes a little trickier in that if the member being replaced is serving a four-year term, which is the case with us, and the vacancy occurs more than 60 days before the general election, which is the case for us, then the person shall be elected to the seat for the remainder of the unexpired term. So, when you combine those two, the board has the responsibility to fill the vacancy through our December meeting. The remainder of the term, which would be an additional two years, would be filled by someone who was elected on the November ballot. So, there are two actions that would need to be taken, an appointment and an election to fulfill the remainder of this term. Are there questions about that before I get into further details? Okay. So, to be eligible to fill the appointed vacancy, which would be until December of our current year, a person must be of the same political party as the member that's being replaced. And the process laid out in this statute requires that the county commissioners would consult with the executive committee of that party, and that they would submit a name for consideration by the county commissioners. So, there is no requirement that you have to accept that name and appoint that particular person, but you do have to at least solicit a name from the political party. And the same thing for the Clerk of Superior Court. They're not bound by the committee's recommendation, but they do have to receive a name. And then finally, the last statute that we looked at was 163-115D, and that is for the remainder of the term, so for the two years that the candidate would have to go through the election process. The process for that is that a nomination has to come from the executive committee of each political party, and the names of those nominees then will be printed on the general election ballot for November. So, that is the direction that's coming from the state statutes, and I'm happy to entertain questions from any board members about that. Talking with the chairman, we are hoping that direction could be given to him after today's discussion, for him to contact the executive committee of the Republican Party and ask them for a nomination to fill the term through December of this year.
So, the thought process was to put this on a public meeting today, so that way we could air out the process to the public, and then get your permission from you all. But, what I pretty much would like to do is draft a letter representing the board to the Person County GOP to go ahead and submit us a name, so we can go ahead and get this seat filled for the time being.
You need a, you need a motion for that?
Yes.
Well, I saw it moved.
Well, it's been properly moved. For me to go ahead and send a letter to the Person County GOP, further discussion?
Do you have one question, Gordon Proctor?
Yes.
So, what the executive committee of the party has named a nominee, hypothetically, let's say if that nominee is not approved, so there, if the exec, is there a number of, is there a number of times that a, can present a nominee, because we're, the talk has already started, starting on February 3rd, to get us, to get the name in? Is there a number of times, or, because we obviously would have a limited number of meetings to approve of any nominee? So, are we looking at if one nominee is not approved, we have to wait till the next meeting to receive a second nominee, if that is the situation, and so forth? Or, if, I just want to get a better understanding of that.
Do you want to take it?
The statute is not specific as to subsequent nominees from the political party. It speaks in the singular. My first impression is that there is a single time for the party to make the recommendation. If the commissioners fail to adopt that recommendation, I don't think there is an opportunity formally for the party to suggest someone else. Obviously, if the commissioners want to informally consider some other suggestion, they could do so, but there's no legal requirement for a formal sucket recommendation.
And does the, suppose we do get to the 50-day mark, does the Clerk of Superior Court have to take a, a, not, a replacement of that particular party?
Yes, she does.
I'm done with my question.
Okay. I wanted to ask if you'd like to ask the Republican Committee for a timeframe to get a name back to you all. Your next board meeting would be March 9th. It's a little off schedule because we're commending Local Government Day with the schools. So, if you wanted...
Do you know when they, do you know when they meet? Would you have the opportunity to present someone before the next board meeting?
Absolutely.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and draft a letter fairly soon. All right, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. All opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Lori Oakley, solar farm discussion. Oh, excuse me, let me say one thing. Commissioner Newell's committee assignments. I don't know how often his committees meet. Some of these committees might meet quarterly or monthly, but I will try to cover the Health Board and the Person County Senior Center. I'm asking Commissioner Clayton if you will cover the Library Board. Commissioner Preier, if you could cover the Adam Control Board, since you and I both have served on that before. If you can't make it, if you let me know, I'll go in your place. And Commissioner Powell, Pass Board. Everybody minimal to that? You good, Kyle?
I heard it, yes.
Commissioner Powell? All right, yep. Lori?
I T., if I could get my presentation on the screen? If I can.
I left off your board, Russell, because you have some, I'm an alternate already, so...
Help desk ticket? So, we're going to add live without presentation, but the information is in your packet. Hopefully, it'll be up here shortly forthcoming. So, planning staff was asked by County Manager York to update the board and just briefly talk about our current solar farm regulations and some templates that are out there, that are possibilities for the boards to consider. So, currently, the Person County Planning Ordinance regulates solar farms based on, first and foremost, the zoning district in which they're located. Solar farms are considered a light industrial use and are prohibited in the R or the residential district. Solar farms are considered a use by right, which means they would be approved at staff level. level unless they are located within 250 feet of a residential structure, as measured from structure to structure. So in other words, we would measure from the wall of the house to the closest panel on the site. If a solar farm is located within 250 feet of a residential structure, then approval must come from a special use permit, which would go to the planning board and to the Board of Commissioners. Additional regulations that we currently have in place is a 50-foot vegetated buffer when the solar farm is adjacent or across from residential uses, a decommissioning plan, and a performance guarantee that's equal to 1.25 times the estimated decommissioning costs as determined by a registered licensed engineer. Please note that we do have additional regulations that might apply. For example, if a proposed solar farm wants to locate in the Tarp Amoco or the Falls watershed, there's additional watershed regulations, as are flood hazard area or flood hazard regulations if they choose to locate in such area. That's kind of it as a nutshell, so far as what we currently have in the planning ordinance. According to the School of Government, additional regulations for solar farms can include requirements based on the type of solar ray, so whether, for example, it's an accessory use or whether it's a principal use, quasi judicial versus staff review, height and setback requirements, screening and fencing requirements, and additional regulations for glare standards. Now, in your packet, and I keep wanting to grab the pointer, excuse me, I've included a template, should look like, look like I might be getting something. It's a template that was created in 2016 from the North Carolina Solar Center and North Carolina Sustainable Energy Association. Let me try to move on along to that. So this template was created with a lot of jurisdictions working together to give you possible regulations when you're looking at considering regulating solar farms, or as we technically call them, solar energy systems. So, some possibilities that you can look at so far as regulating them is defining solar energy systems by different levels based on their size. For example, in that template ordinance, they recommend three different levels. Level one is a roof-mounted system, which is very common in residential, you probably see them on the tops of people's houses, or ground-mounted systems that are up to 50% of the footprint of the primary structure. Level two would be a ground-mounted system that's less than a half acre in size in a residential area, or less than 10 acres in a commercial or any size in industrial area. And level three is any solar energy system that doesn't meet the criteria for level one or two. Determining where different types of solar systems are allowed by right or staff level, or whether they require a quasi judicial review. For example, going back to those three levels that I just discussed, the template recommends that a level one, because of the smallness of it, and it's typically an accessory use, like a roof-mounted system, that those be allowed by right at staff level, whereas those proposed in a level two require additional standards, and level three requires a special use permit in certain districts. Another way that you can regulate them is by height and setback restrictions. Again, going back to those levels, perhaps in level one and two, they have to meet the setbacks in the zoning district, whereas a level three, since it's larger in nature, might have more stringent setback requirements. Providing aviation notification and evaluation of solar glare aviation hazard. So aviation notification, and that would be just it, notifying the airport, would be required for any solar energy system over a half acre in size located within five nautical miles of the closest airport, in order for the project to be reviewed for potential impacts to the flight paths. Also, the latest version of the solar glare hazard tool would be used to evaluate to make sure that there's no solar glare aviation hazards created by the proposed solar energy system. And a few other topics they discuss is water infiltration and soil conservation recommendations, buffering requirements, which I've already talked about, and abandonment and decommissioning requirements, which we did add to our ordinance within the last two years. So in summary, there are additional regulations that could be added to the Person County Planning Ordinance to regulate solar farms. If the board wishes to make a large amendment, then we could look at creating a freestanding separate ordinance for solar energy systems. If you're looking at perhaps just adding a couple of items, I would recommend keeping any additional texts in the current zoning ordinance, just because I believe it makes it easier for citizens and developers to find the information, since they're already familiar with that ordinance. But again, if you want to look at adding several regulations and restrictions, we could easily create a freestanding ordinance if the board so chooses, or if you're comfortable with the current regulations, we can leave the ordinance as is. Again, this information was just provided as more of a four-year information, as requested by the manager. I do realize there's been a lot of talk in the community about the solar project in Hurdle Mills. We would like to state that no one has contacted the planning staff from the developer or the homeowner. We have not received a call or an email about the project in the last three years since I've been here. So, we haven't seen the plans. I've gone on to the state's website and looked at the boundary, which apparently has now changed, but have not reviewed any specific plans. If you have any additional questions of me, I'll be happy to try to answer them. In your packet was a nice five-page summary. Kayla, our planner, worked on this, so it kind of briefly summarizes everything that I just went over, so far as our current regulations and possible proposed regulations.
Mr. Chairman? If we looked at a freestanding ordinance to regulate this, about how long do you think that would take, if we were going to look at a ordinance? What do you think, how long would it take you to prepare that?
It would probably take, well, we'd want to know what you want, what parameters you want included in it. I would say maybe 60 days to get it on a planning board agenda, 60 to 90 days, to carry it to the planning board and then bring it back to the Board of Commissioners.
Now, the next question is, if we put a moratorium on these solar farms and no applications been made to the candidate, moratorium stands until we get this ordinance prepared, am I correct? And how long can we put the moratorium on for?
There's a distinction in the statute between a 60-day moratorium and a moratorium for longer than 60 days. There are more procedural requirements in the longer plus 61-day moratorium. You ought to consider that there's specific language in the statutes which gives something in the nature of the vested right to the solar farm applicants if a process, some stage of a process, has occurred, and your moratorium, in order to get ahead of any kind of vested rights, need to be, would need to be in place before those processes. It is probably a requirement that before an application to the county has been made, I think we could argue that what the application that has been made to the state would not key a vested right, but if you want to be absolutely sure to hold things in place, the process for a moratorium should be started as soon as possible. You cannot adopt that moratorium until you have the public notice. So if you wanted to do that at this meeting, what you would be doing is directing the staff to start the procedural requirements, so that you could consider the moratorium at the earliest possible time.
Could we consider that at the next meeting?
You could consider it at the next meeting, yes.
What's the notice requirements for that?
The moratorium, the notice is, if you're the longer period, sequentially, 60 days or less, there's a seven-day notice to be published one time. 61 days or more, there's a two-notice procedure. So you would probably, and I'm missing Brenda, I've not calculated the exact days, but I think there would be a sufficient amount of time between...
Since our next meeting is made, it allows us more time. So we could do the longer than 60-day one, and give us time to prepare a decent ordinance. I don't want to rush this thing through and mess it up.
When the statute does require you to, as the planning director has indicated, to make sure that there has been contact with the FAA and all the rules have been complied with, so you would want to make sure that you gave enough time in your moratorium to work with the federal government, to examine exactly what you want, so you would probably want the longer period to make sure that you had the time necessary.
Is there a public hearing required?
There is a public hearing required, yes. Mr. Chairman, if somebody else wants to comment...
Before we take a motion, let's see if those have questions. Commissioner Preier, do you have any questions?
Not at the time.
Mr. Powell? I would just ask that while we start this process, that possibly Commissioner Powell, I think you're on the airport commission, will you all meet before our next board meeting?
No.
Okay, well, maybe we can reach out to them and let them know that we're starting this process to see...
There's been a concern, I'll just say that. We won't meet before this date that we're talking about, but there's been a concern about that because the plans are well underway for runway extension and other building out there, so it's a big concern right now for the pilots on that group.
Well, I think as active as our airport is in its location, proposed location for the one that was spoken to earlier, that we get their input. Also, we'll mention it to the EDC board meeting when we meet next week to get their input, and I would like us to reach out to the Farm Bureau Board. I know a few years ago, they had come to us, possibly with a meeting, to discuss solar farms in the county, and that never materialized, but I think if we're going to start talking about doing a separate ordinance, that we get their input as well.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we set a public hearing for our next commissioners' meeting to look at changing our solar farm ordinance, and we place a moratorium on solar farms until we get this in place, for more than 60 days.
Mr. Chairman, you may not be able to do this now, but you, when you place the moratorium on, you would want to say exactly how long you want it to be.
So we need a motion to have the public hearing, and then we'll have to do it after the public hearing for the, okay. I make a motion that we have the public hearing at our next meeting.
For a longer period than 61 days to be determined at the meeting.
Okay. Got it? Everybody understand the motion?
Mr. Lawyer, you understand it?
Yes, sir.
I might understand it, and you might not, and you are in one that's important.
I would disagree with that statement, but I accept it.
You get in the court, you'd be right.
Commissioner Preier, do you understand the motion?
I do.
All right, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
For clarification, at the March 9th moratorium public hearing, could staff get guidance as to what you would like to see in the freestanding ordinance?
What's the largest one now in the county? Do you know? How many acres?
Largest one in size? I'm not sure. We had 12 approved. I think we have nine that are built. I don't believe we have any that are 300-plus acres. Seems like they're in the 100s.
Between now and then, then, if any commissioner has any questions that may need answers, you would direct it to Manager York, and she would share the answers with all of us. That be appropriate?
And also solicit some direction.
Okay.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item number four, proposal to raise EMS salaries. Doug Young.
I come to you in an issue that has come up with us for the last seven years, and it is our current EMS adjustment for salaries because of our turnout in our free year. I'm going to do an introduction, and the staff will come up and go a little bit further with that. So, in our current situation, we have noticed a current salary adjustment is needed. Nationally, a state paramedic shortage is out there. This is supported by our National Journals of EMS, and also our State Office of EMS here in the state of North Carolina. There's a national shortage of paramedics bottom line, and there's a significant shortage of it in the state of North Carolina. We are currently down seven employees as far as full-time paramedics, and of that, because of that, we have increased our EMT, which is a level-blown paramedic, to the point that we cannot hire any more EMTs and not have an advanced life support, transport. With these seven openings, this is equivalent to one shift, one full shift of our current staffs. We've been able, however, to operate four trucks that we have per day for most of the occasions without, well, with the staff that we have. I want to give high kudos to our current staff. Because of the nature of our job and the compassion that they have, they stepped up to the plate to come in on their days off and work with us to get those truck, four trucks going. They're doing that every day, but we're at the point where retention is at the point where it's overtaxing. It is overworking them, and they're getting right tired. Over the past two years, we've had 21 positions opened. Of those 21 positions, eight of them left us for higher pay with other EMS agencies. Seven of them retired, both for the 30-year retirement and for some medical reasons, but seven of them retired. Six of them resigned for various occasions. Since October of 2018, we have posted these positions nine times. And of those, several of them were not successful in passing our physical agility test and did not go through, did not pass our interviews or skill process. Several of them selected, didn't even show up to their interviews. Two of our postses never produced any applications. So of these processes, we have been able to hire of those 21, five paramedics, one advanced EMT, and eight EMTs. I want to go back on that current situation. Of those shortage, we compare us to, and you'll see later on in our study, but we have found out that even Caswell County, our neighboring county, pays $1 more an hour than we have, than we do. And that is a county that's half the population of our county. They run with one less truck than us, and they have less employees, because they're able to pay more per hour for their paramedics. And that's what we're up against. With the shortage, we're up against other agencies that just pay more than we do, bottom line. The other side, the other flip side of this for recruitment is the retention, our current employees that are here. If you remember of that previous slides, we've lost some for other EMS agencies. Eight of them out of those 21 went for other agencies for higher pay. But our current program doesn't compensate our employees for years of experience or education. Education that, by that I mean is, they go out on a lot and get further education for advanced life support to support their paramedic. Other than their paramedic skills, they go out on their own and take these classes to... Other than their paramedic skills, they go out on their own and take these classes to help our patients. So we have a very limited career path that we have. And we hopefully, possibly, can address this in the next fiscal year. I will share, though, one thing that has helped a little bit, and the manager recognized it, and she approved it, and we moved forward with it quickly, was when we advertised, we advertised, we was advertising at a base pay. So when a paramedic is looking at one of the many websites they can go to, Office of OEMS for the state, or the county's website, they compare, they obviously look at the base pay. So currently, just recently, the manager has approved that we are starting to advertise a hiring range. So it gives that person knowledge that is flexible, so they will not turn off immediately, like we have seen. And we've been told that by candidates that we knew was looking or interested in us, but they look at that bottom line. So other things for retention and recruitment is our current Piedmont Community College has a paramedic program. Today, its program is eight candidates in it, or eight students, and three of those are our own EMTs right now. So just less than half of those are our own employees right now. But in the history, PCC has not, their program has not been that vulnerable, I mean, has not been that productive in applicants. So we having to reach out to other community colleges. And what we do there, we're competing with other counties when we going after those paramedics that are in the current classes. So what are we doing now? I'm not just coming here and asking you for more money without us trying to do something with what we have. So in two thousand and nineteen, we developed, or added to our community connection program, we added a recruitment team to address these challenges. For the first time in this division, we, this recruitment team, which is a handful of paramedics that are volunteer to go out and try to recruit other paramedics for us, with the help of HR, we trained them, we given them knowledge of how to do the presentation. But we gonna have to think out of the box. That was very obvious at the very first part of this. We gonna have to think out of the box and do something different, have a different twist than the other hundred counties, or ninety-nine counties in this state, because we're competing against them. And that is, our advantage is real in Virginia State Line. And still, the majority of EMS in Virginia is volunteers. So we are starting to reach out into Virginia to encourage those volunteers to continue to volunteer in their county, but come to us to get paid for all that training they've done over the years for train, for volunteers. So in November, we attended the Virginia EMS Symposium in Norfolk to display our services and recruitment. Even though there were a couple of North Carolina agencies there right beside us, we was able to recruit, and she's working today, a paramedic from the Tidewater area to come here. We are also going to start hosting career fairs in southern Virginia, Pennsylvania County, Halifax County, and Mecklenburg County, to mention those, to go out to those areas and try to recruit those people to come to Person County. Because currently, we have a handful of paramedics from Virginia coming over here. And then we plan on attending some of the paramedic classes, both in Virginia and in North Carolina. We're still going to reach out to North Carolina, but we having to think outside of the box and do something more creative to do that. And obviously, we are advertising and posting these openings. We are posting things to try to promote our department and tell the good things about it and the great things about that we have to offer to them on social media. And then we also are going out to assist with the EMTs and paramedics, the scope of practices, testing, and exposure of possible recruitment there. So we're going out and trying to find ways to recruit paramedics to come here. Trying to get it there before the other counties get there. So with that, there have been a long period of time, months to be exact, a little over a year, really, that we have been doing some internal research, both with our EMS administration and with the help of our HR department, to show that the, in this research, that paramedic shortage have existed nationally. We've confirmed that, and we have been studied over the last ten years. North Carolina has recognized, the state of North Carolina has also recognized the impacts for the past two years. And Person County is now one of those mini systems. One thing, or three things of those in that study showed, the national studies, that almost in every article that we researched, what recruits and retains paramedics is salaries, benefits, and the work schedule. Person County government, we feel, has great benefits. We actually have a few benefits that other counties do not offer, that we are pushing that out in our recruitment. And we're, our current work schedule is the work schedule that is one of the two preferred by paramedics across the state. So we have that advantage, too. Our selections have mostly come from surrounding community colleges programs, which we, they are completing many other agencies in the same personnel. So I want to bring up Chief White and Lisa Austin, that has taken this research material that we've done and tried to come up with a reasonable, practical way to adjust this. And this, this is where our request is coming from, to make us more attractive to paramedics. Because I will tell you this, it's at the critical stage. I'll go back to North Carolina, I'll go back to Caswell County, where they're paying a dollar more an hour with less than what we have. They recognized this two years ago. In their studies, and what they did, they made their salaries just a little bit above what the rest of them could do, and that's attractive. I would tell you that's that two paramedics in this recruitment process that we were doing, and actually, they were applicants, switched and went, one with Caswell County was one of them, and the other one with their, simply because when we went to offer them the job, they came back and said, well, the example, Caswell County has offered us more, and that's where I'm going. No, we totally understood that. But that kind of gives you the, what we're up against on recruitment. And I want to emphasize, this is seven people, one shift is critical. We have to move forward with this consideration now. So I'll bring you, and they are here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's kind of funny how Director Young gives you a little history, and then sends me up here to ask for money, but we're all over. Just give you a little history on our current pay practice research. EMS admin, I worked with HR director. Lisa kind of stepped in this right in her new role, but she's done an excellent job. So we had a meeting some three, four, or five weeks ago with the county manager. She had, I had proposed some figures, and she had asked HR director to confirm them through the school of government. Through that research, the information, although it was based on two thousand and eighteen salary information, showed that we were less than surrounding counties or counties like size. And then EMS admin, going through the NCO EMS website where they post jobs, calling county to county, just giving information, and kind of concurred with what human resources, Ms. Austin had figured out. So, so what are we, I'm sorry, how would you diagnose? What are we asking for? We'd like the board of commissioners to consider moving our starting pay. We'd like to move paramedic to eighteen sixty-two an hour, advanced EMT to sixteen oh eight an hour, and EMT to fourteen oh nine an hour. We would also like some consideration given for years of experience. And a lot of my talking with Durham County paramedics that I see right off and working part-time behind me, that's one of the reasons that they say that they don't want to come work here because we don't pay anything for years of experience. And that our salary is low, but we don't pay anything for your experience. So we'd like to consider the possibility of one, two years, two percent, three to five at four percent, six, ten at six percent, and eleven to a plus year at seven percent. We'd also like to see if we could get these implemented March first, two thousand and twenty, so that we can begin our campaign again to try to get some staffing. Problem with our staffing is that, you know, we just can't hire anybody to come in, put them right to work. There's a process they have to go through, what's called the field training evaluation program. They've learned our protocols, have to learn the county. It's usually a two to three month process. So we're already behind once we hire them, so.
Can I ask a question, Ray? Can you go back, can you give us the context of what their current hourly rates are?
Yes, paramedic is sixteen eighty-nine at this time. The EMT is thirteen eighty-nine, and the EMT is fifteen thirty-six. Thirty-two, sorry.
And so what is the?
EMT was thirteen eighty-nine?
Yes, sir.
What's the formula adjustment on that? Is it, were we matching our regional? Were we taking above our competitors? I can't recall what the.
We were, we came to the conclusion that most were around eighteen fifty, if I remember correctly. Kind of the state average, the average for surrounding counties and of like size was, I think, a little bit higher than that. So we decided to go with the eighteen sixty-two in our, I think we had talked about that in our meeting. So if others came back and raised their rates, we would still be in a competitive nature.
Do you have a question, Commissioner?
Well, the numbers you just talked about, how does that factor in with the consideration incorporated a percent? Is that included in there, or is that an extra incentive at the bottom? Oh, the years of experience?
That's right, an extra incentive.
Yeah, right, okay. And that's a, that's a good incentive. I mean, that's a good structure. I think something that really does need to be on the table in consideration. So I just want to know what, that it is different. It's over and above.
And that would apply to our current staff as well as new recruits?
Um, yes, ma'am.
Percentage increases?
Yep.
Is that right, Lisa?
And I'll add, well, we still have the minimum and the midpoint and the maximum of the particular pay grade. But if you all do approve this, this will give us the flexibility to offer someone with more experience, we think, offer them a higher salary when they come in. And that's a recruiting tool that is desperately needed.
And the current employees would be adjusted as well. So it's not, hopefully bringing anybody in at a higher starting rate, so.
Okay.
Cost of maintenance, and if Laura wants to interject any of this, sure. We looked at cost if we implemented in March this year. What cost the rest of the year was around seventy-five thousand. How do we pay for that? Current fee, EMS fees right now are trending to be a hundred and ninety thousand above budgeted. And I know Lauren I met several weeks ago, I see a side of it from a billing company, and she sees a side from the finance side, which, just due to input processes, is a little bit behind. But right now, we're averaging about fourteen thousand dollars extra per month, fourteen to eighteen thousand of what we have budgeted. Just, I know this is the iffy one, but our Medicaid cost report last year was a hundred and eleven thousand above what we budgeted. We're hoping that number will be similar this year, so. But like I said, I know that's just a projection. And we have participated in three desk audits, three Medicaid desk audits this year. And from that, we have got an additional thirty-one thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars. The cost for next fiscal year is kind of hard to project. We're looking at probably additional hundred and seventy thousand. That is on the very, on the high end. That includes fringe benefits. The problem we're running into right now is, we got a lot of people working a lot of extra hours, where our overtime rate is kind of high. And probably all reality, if we looked at it and we were able to get fully staffed, or close to fully staffed, our salaries would actually probably drop just because of what we're paying overtime right now.
That was my question, how much overtime we paying now compared to what you budgeted?
We have exceeded, we have exceeded the overtime budget already, and they did a budget transfer a couple of weeks ago to cover that from their existing full-time salary line. Due to vacancies, they had room in their full-time salary, so they were able to transfer some of that money over to overtime. But they have already exceeded their budget, what was originally appropriate.
And this is a trend we've seen over multiple years, not just this year, trying to manage our overtime budget.
So keep in mind for every opening we have, for vacation or something, we have to pay too deep because we have to bring you a bag, you know. So we pay overtime for that.
Are you going to speak to, in your presentation, I don't want to jump ahead, if you want to speak to full year costs?
The, well, that's kind of the end of the presentation.
I'll let you finish.
No, that is the end of it. Like I said.
Okay.
Full year cost?
So, okay, you got seventy-five in your presentation. Our abstract had sixty-seven. So I was talking to the manager when I was looking at what you all asking for, for the next four months. I was trying to figure out what it would be for a full year. But my understanding that there are other factors in that, so I couldn't just multiply sixty-seven times four, or three, to get it to full year. So I'm trying to figure out, if we do this, what will be the full year cost to continue it? We don't want to implement it for four months, and then y'all go back to.
No, I understand. And like I said, we are projecting it to be an additional hundred and seventy thousand for next year. We're, salary.
Because if you're transferring now from full-time vacancy pay, that was money that was budgeted. And so next year, I'm trying to get that kind of a, close as you can, true cost of what it's going to cost, because you've already transferred from that to pay overtime. And now, if you find seven people or your vacancies between now and July one, and you're telling us now it's going to cost seventy-five, are you going to be coming back for additional money? Because you've already used some of that full-time money because it's been vacant, or?
In my review with the assistant county manager and the budget manager, we had figured that for this year, that what we had left in lapse salary would cover what we were projected to spend in overtime. So as we fill positions and get them actually released to function, then that number will, that overtime number will come down. My projections, if we were fully staffed, starting July first, or close to within one or two positions, the money we would spend on salaries next year would probably decrease. But I won't say how much, because I really don't know. But I'm just saying that. I've run the figures for this year, and I've run the figures for next year on what Ms. Austin has projected. And we're actually, that was actually a smaller mountain.
I could just interject one thing. Amy and I looked at the room and salaries because of vacancies and turnover. Even with the overtime, we still believe there is plenty of lapse salary currently to cover their request in the current year. And then, of course, for next year, that would have to be added to the personnel budget, and formulas and et cetera have to be put into that. So that would be a separate consideration. But currently, we believe there's enough existing money to cover this request.
So I got that part. What I'm trying to figure out is what it's going to cost next year.
And his prediction at this time is one hundred and seventy thousand or less?
One seventy, above what we're budgeting now?
Yes.
Commissioners, to speak to the difference between the sixty-seven thousand and the seventy-five thousand.
Come to the podium, introduce yourself. I think it's the first time, this is the first time you've spoken at a commission meeting.
I'm sorry.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning, audience.
I am Lisa Austin, the new human resources director. To speak to the difference between the sixty-seven thousand and the seventy-five thousand, we currently have employees who have gotten merit increases, who have gone from EMTs to paramedics. So that accounts for the difference between the sixty-seven and the seventy-five. So, that accounts for the difference between the sixty-seven and the seventy-five.
And you feel comfortable with the one seventy projection-
Yes.
For next year?
Yes.
Any questions from the board, commissioner per year? Did you hear all of that?
I did. I think it's something that we have to address. There was a letter and I'm in favor on the recommendations.
Okay. Any questions from the board or what's your pleasure?
No further problem.
It's been properly moved for approval for the discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I can't go without saying one more time that-
Don't mess it up, Doug, you got it.
I know. Lisa and Chief White, especially Lisa, having been here a month. They have really done outstanding job on getting this thing together. Lisa, kind of her and the pen right, that's again, thank you.
Well, thank you and thank you all for what you all do.
Thanks to the staff.
I know my family's used you quite a bit when my grandfather was ailing in age and we appreciate your service. Okay, item number five, resolution declaring Person County a constitutional rights protected county. It's a long resolution, but I'll read it.
Okay.
Whereas the Constitution of the United States is the supreme law of our nation and the Second Amendment, there too states a well-regulated militia being necessary to the security of a free state, the right of the people to keep and bear arms, shall not be infringed. And whereas the North Carolina Constitution, Article One, Section Thirty states a well-regulated militia being necessary to the security of a free state, the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed. And as standing armies in time of peace and dangerous to liberty, they shall not be maintained and the military shall be kept under strict subordination to and governed by the civil power. Nothing herein shall justify the practice of carrying concealed weapons or prevent the General Assembly from enacting penal statutes against that practice. And whereas a long line of established U.S. Supreme Court cases have ruled where rights are secured by the U.S. Constitution, including the Second Amendment rights, no rulemaking or legislation may abrogate those rights and the right to keep and bear arms is secured by the due process and privileges and immunities clauses of the Fourteenth Amendment of the United States Constitution. And whereas the citizens of Person County have long supported the rights of the individual, particularly as those rights exist under the U.S. and North Carolina constitutions, including the Second Amendment of the U.S. Constitution. And whereas the Person County Board of Commissioners is concerned about the passage of any bill or legislation which could, could be interpreted as infringing the rights of the citizens of Person County to keep and bear arms. And whereas the Person County Board of Commissioners expresses its deep commitment to the rights of all citizens of Person County to keep and bear arms. And whereas the Person County Board of Commissioners wishes to express its opposition to any law that would unconstitutionally restrict the rights under the Second Amendment of the U.S. Constitution and under the North Carolina Constitution of the citizens of Person County to keep and bear arms and all rights and privileges arising therefrom. And whereas the Person County Board of Commissioners expresses its intent to stand as a constitutional rights protected county for Second Amendment rights and to oppose within the limits of the Constitution of the United States and the state of North Carolina, any efforts to unconstitutionally restrict such rights and to use such legal means at its disposal to protect the rights of citizens to keep and bear arms. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Person County that acting within its powers, duties, and responsibilities, the Board shall respect, protect, and defend the Second Amendment rights of the citizens of Person County. And the Board will oppose within the limits of the Constitutions of the United States and the state of North Carolina, any efforts to unconstitutionally restrict such rights and to use such constitutional means at its disposal to protect the rights of its citizens to keep and bear arms. And the Board of Commissioners hereby declares that Person County, North Carolina, is a constitutional rights protected county. Now, I've asked the attorney to look over the resolution that the Person County GOP handed us in his short time. And I think he will just try to explain maybe the differences or comparisons.
I obviously, yeah, I've not had time to do in-depth analysis, but the differences are fairly minimal, but probably substantial. On the first page of the resolution before you, the, all except the last whereas are pretty much identical. The, I guess we'll call it, the Republican Party proposal does make some changes in the whereas clause, which begins, Person County Board of Commissioners expresses its intent to stand as a constitutional rights protected county. It provides in the last, the, suck it from the last line, that it would oppose any efforts by any entity. So, that is a difference that would oppose any efforts by any entity. Probably by implication, that's essentially the same thing that is in the resolution proposed by the county. The, there is an omission of the word in that same whereas to oppose any effort that county proposal before you says to unconstitutionally restrict, that unconstitutionally is omitted in the Republican Party's proposal. And probably more significant is the resolution, the resolve clause, whereas clause is only state opinion and have essentially no legal enforceable effect. It is the resolve clause that is intended to be action-oriented. The Republican Party's proposal does have essentially, maybe identically, the same language as the resolve clause in the county's proposal. But they would add, this would add, a sucket paragraph that Person County will not authorize or appropriate government funds, resources, employees, agencies, contractor, building, or offices for the purpose of enforcing or assisting in gun confiscation or other restrictions that infringe on the right to keep and bear arms by law abiding citizens as expressed in the Second Amendment to the United States Constitution. There is an omission of the North Carolina Constitution, but that's not substantial. U.S. Constitution is paramount. But it does provide action, that the county would take action to not take action to enforce any, any activity that would restrict the right to bear arms. The U.S. Supreme Court decision in Heller, there are a whole series of cases after the Heller decision. The Heller decision is a controlling decision. It does not provide an absolute right to bear arms. It clearly makes it clear that the U.S. Supreme Court believes that there is a right to bear arms and given in the U.S. Constitution and not, as was originally understood, only restricted to, or intended to help in preparing a militia. So, there is a greater right than just to have a standing militia, but it is not an absolute right. This last paragraph in the resolve may often, may tend to try to authorize the county to do things which the Constitution and Supreme Court's decision would not authorize you to do. It is not, probably not intended to do so. But I believe the resolution before you, as proposed at the beginning of the meeting, goes about as far as you can go safely and does essentially the same thing as is proposed by this proposed resolution by the Republican Party. That's a lot of legal words.
A lot of lawyer talk for saying that it's very, they're about the same besides the last paragraph.
That's true, that's true.
Questions for the attorney?
So, other than the last paragraph, it's pretty much?
Pretty much. The only, the only difference is in the last whereas. The county proposal does not, it does include that, that unconstitutionally restrict rights. This proposal does not insert the word unconstitutional, probably implied anyway. But the whereas and the Republican Party proposal does ask that the county oppose any efforts by any entity. That's a difference, that's an addition, by any entity. Problematic there, would that tend to put the county on record as anything that restricts, you'd have to oppose? It is, it's a soft issue because as I indicated to you, whereas clause really gives you no power. It just says, that's what we think. But it moves you toward supporting or opposing any private entity, public entity efforts.
Commissioner?
I'll make one. Go ahead.
Well, no, I just wanted to make, maybe ask Mr. Weaver again, if that's okay? With all the whereses and implications and lawyers speak and this sort of stuff, are we still okay?
I have-
May I, may I address?
That's fine.
It is virtually the same in most respects. The action is where it really changes them. I don't believe yours had any, anything actionable by, on part of the county.
Not in reference to this last paragraph that you all have?
Correct, correct. This is the same, this is almost, this last section is verbatim that has been passed throughout counties across, especially out, out towards the western end of the state. The whereas change is, it's, I agree, it doesn't, you know, I don't, I don't see where it really matters, which way we go with that. But this last part, the actionable part, will not authorize or appropriate government funds, resources, employees, agencies, contractor, building, or offices for the purposes of enforcing or assisting gun confiscation. Me, it means that if the state loses its mind, the county's not going to help the state in enforcing their will on the citizens of, of the, of this county. That, that's all up to the state to come in here and act as a big dog and strip us of our, of our rights.
That answer your question, Commissioner Powell?
Yeah, I think so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I want to make a comment. First off, legislature could meet next week and dissolve the counties. What do you really understand that or not? So, I understand what Mr. Weaver's saying. He's, I don't have a problem with that. I do, uh-
Can I help you with something?
Well, I understand exactly what he's saying. But you also got to understand how much powers the county actually does have. I mean, and Mr., I think the attorney can tell you that we're creatures created by the state of North Carolina. So, you know, we're gonna, we can say all of these things that we want to say, but still, the county is governed by the state. That's why you pay property tax and beat us up raising the property tax because the state delegated down here because they didn't have the nerve to do it for us. So, you know, they, the things that the state does. I'm for adopting the one that the county's got. I don't see that it makes a lot of, I hear what he's saying, but I don't see that it really in essence really makes a lot of difference exactly how that last part's worded from the standpoint of where we are at in the hierarchy, in the pecking order, I guess. And, you know, the attorney feels like we on legal grounds and as we've all said, I'm not sure how much legal force this has.
It's just a resolution.
It's a resolution.
So, we wouldn't have a-
There's no law behind it.
That's exactly right. It's a resolution.
So, we couldn't tie-
I just want to point that out.
Future boys, anyway.
You know, I know what it says in here about the state and the federal government, but, you know, you got the federal government, the state government, and then you got us. And y'all are the ones that can let us know if you really don't like something we're doing. But I feel like we fine with it and, like I said, it's a resolution.
But at least it lets everybody know what we stand for.
It's a matter of record.
Exactly right.
So, and I, and I know the legislature in their infinite wisdom can wipe it all out. I understand that. But this is an opportunity to let people know what we stand for in Person County.
Commissioner per year, comments, questions?
Question, first question is the, the GOP proposed resolution. Have any county, have there been any counties to adopt that resolution? That still have any?
We just got it this morning, Commissioner per year. So, I don't know if we have an answer to that.
Well, I was asking, I was asking the GOP chairman, the GOP president, if any other counties had approved, had approved that particular resolution.
This is the Surrey Counties, this is almost verbatim for Surrey County. And this has been used as the model throughout much of the state. This is not exactly what everyone has passed so far, but it has been disseminated and used as the model.
Could you hear that, Commissioner per year?
I did. The, the resolution that is before, that was presented by the chairman, is that the resolution that, I know, I believe the Surrey County resolution is what y'all like to call it, or is this the same one as the others? Such as, I know Bramble is presenting a resolution as well. Does this be-
Well, I talked to some, I talked to some commissioners at a meeting and some, the chairman training. There were several county attorneys there, some that were taking it up that week. And so, I brought it back to our attorney and he can speak to the other counties.
The model that is on the floor is pretty much identical to the model, the resolution that was adopted in Catawba County. There are a few other counties that have done this in a substantially changed form. I don't know the total number of counties. I know the Catawba resolution that is modeled here was devised or changed by the Catawba Board to address some of the issues discussed here about making sure that we only do that which we're authorized. So, this is a, really a Catawba County form that has been changed some to make it applicable to Person County. A few other counties have adopted the Catawba form.
So, is it my understanding that these resolutions are mostly the same, but have just different variations, correct?
I believe that is the case, but attorneys would tell you that words make a difference. So, I'm not sure, all attorneys would say they're all the same.
Well, could we add that paragraph?
I think it's, it's within your policy to do so. I think it is somewhat problematic, as I expressed before, because it, it states things that you would do that you may not be authorized to do. The proposal before you is clearly to ensure that you have the authority to do what is stated.
Don't worry about the implication on the sheriff's department. They are compensating guns.
Yeah, the sheriff, the sheriff is a separately elected official and the, it may have some effect on sheriff's action. I'm not, he's not here to speak for himself.
Further questions for the attorney? Hearing none, I make a motion to approve the resolution presented by the county. Further discussion?
I make a, I make a substitute motion to approve the Republican proposed resolution.
I have a substitute motion to approve the resolution presented by the Person County GOP. If my procedure is correct, we vote on his motion first, is there discussion?
Well, you have some discussion if you-
So, I have a substitute motion to adopt the Person County GOP version, discussion?
I think it's a good addition to what we've got for all-inclusive.
Legally problematic.
I think neither one of them are worth the paper they're written on. We're just stating the matter of, we're stating the matter of record here where we stand as Person County government. And so I would hope that we could pass something today. I do feel, as the attorney who we pay to give us legal advice, to not add something in the resolution that we may not have control over or authority over.
Where I think if we ever get to that point, we'd have bigger problems.
Further discussion on the substitute motion. All in favor of the substitute motion of the Person County GOP's resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Aye.
Aye.
All right, the substitute motion is failed. We'll go back to the original motion to, for the resolution that the county presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, aye, all opposed. As had it. Chairman's report. Two weeks ago, manager, I guess we attended a agriculture subcommittee meeting with the EDC, and so happy to report that the Economic Development Commission are looking at the agriculture industry here in Person County in ways that they can assist not just our farmers but our other businesses that include agribusiness and so on here in the county. I attended Orange County's Ag Summit last week, and our hemp manufacturer, Mr. Powell, was it CBX?
OBX.
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 They were there presenting, and he offered, I think you have, he said you may have toured the facility, but I don't know if the rest of us have.
I've been there two or three times.
He offered a tour for any of us that were interested, and so I planned to set something up with him, and I was going to invite anybody else that wanted to go if we wanted to set up something for all of us to go, or if we have three, then we have to announce it or make a notice, but I just wanted to say that he put that invitation out there. And we're happy that he told me all the locations that they looked at, and we're happy they chose Person County to locate. Manager's report?
Nothing to report.
Commissioner Pre-Year, any commissioner report?
Just want to thank the board for accommodating me today. Also, thanks to everyone who's given me some well wishes during the unfortunate setback with my surgery recovery, and I hope to see you all very soon.
Well, we hope you get better soon. Commissioner Powell? Commissioner Clay?
I want to thank everybody that was here today. Y'all need to come back and enjoy some more of this. If you can't be back, you can watch us online, but thank you for coming. I do want to say that I, NACO, North Carolina Association of County Presidents' education forum that he, for his initiative, and we finished that up last week, and they're trying to get some documents and things out, working with the school systems and the county's trying to get better communication between the boards of education and the county's, and trying to catch some of these kids that are getting lost in the system and dropping out of school either because of lack of interest or ever what it is that's causing them to do that. And it was quite an interesting discussion, and I did realize that probably in Person County, we're farther ahead than a lot of them. We've got the community college president and the superintendent, and those type of people are communicating with each other. In some counties, it looked like there wasn't a lot of communication going on. So, you know, you get kids out there, there's not anything wrong with them. What they're doing in school, it's just they either lose, have a lack of interest, or they don't have, maybe there needs to be some more technical courses taught in conjunction with the high schools and the community colleges, but I thought he had a good idea, and, you know, we'll be getting a report out on that pretty quick, but that was pretty, I thought it was a pretty good idea he had. And when he first run it out there, I didn't know whether it was such a good idea or not, but it turned out good.
Could we add in the reminder about the environmental meeting tomorrow night at North Elementary School? A lot of people missed the first one, including me.
Yeah, I did too. I didn't, I didn't know about our recent paper.
I went to North, I didn't see it, so I went on. I just...
I didn't know anything about it.
Explain what that is.
Yeah, I don't know what that is.
Well, it's done by the State of North Carolina. They have representatives there, and they're talking about environmental issues that are primarily about coal ash and some others.
Are they specific to Person County environmental issues or statewide?
I think it's statewide, but we do have those same issues in Person County.
Well, we've got some significant ones.
Yeah, so it's an opportunity to listen and speak.
You know more about it, Mr. Reporter?
It's, it's about the Haco Lake, it's about their closure.
And what time is it tomorrow? I have it in my calendar, I believe.
Six.
Six o'clock at North Elementary. Okay. Also meant to mention that I attended our North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Board Directors' meeting this weekend, and they had a panel there discussing broadband, and they had the head of the North Carolina broadband, and they had the president of AT&amp;T. And by far, Person County is far ahead of a lot of urban counties, not alone, just all the rural counties, but with what we're doing with the 52 miles of fiber and 288 strands and the communication towers, we're a lot ahead of the game. And they recognized Person County when they were speaking there, and so I was glad that I was there, and we kind of talked about possible next steps once we get all this fiber in the ground. And so I'll be sharing that with you all.
And I have asked for a report on that from the manager, which is no hurried, but...
My understanding that we have about 40 miles already laid, that's already in the ground, out of the 52.
That's right.
Yeah, that and beyond, so anyway, that'll come in.
How about email me when the library board meets?
Sure.
If you would.
I'll do that.
All of us for the assignments, I guess I gave.
Yep.
Okay, anything else from any commissioner? Hearing none, I hear a motion to adjourn.
No move.
They've properly moved all. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Thank you, y'all.
Thank you.
Hang up now, don't be an eavesdropper.